We made Christmas cookies today and I had one. I did it with my grandchildren. They ran out of sprinkles and then they didn't want to decorate anymore.
Why would you want to do that?
I know.
That's the fun part.
Yeah, oh, they were eating half the sprinkles, that's why they ran out.
Ready?
Uh, yeah, I have one person that's still trying to get in, it just says joining, but um, here's to be having difficulty.
Give him another minute.
Okay.
Good?
Now, I see now somebody else just came in and I still have Carl uh trying to get in, I don't know what's going on there. We'll keep, we'll keep an eye if you want to get started.
Pledge allegiance.
Uh, one second.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God.
Thank you.
Um, at this time, we're going to ask that everybody keep themselves muted until asked to speak. Um, and please make sure if you have, especially if you have any background noise, please stay muted until it's your turn to speak. Um, the forty-eight hour notice as required under the Open Public Meetings Act has been met as notice of this meeting was emailed on November sixteenth, twenty twenty, and published in the Asbury Park Press, The Co-Star and The Coaster. Copy's been placed on the bulletin board in the borough office and a copy has been filed with the borough clerk. Mr. Afuso.
Here.
Mr. Quinlan.
Here.
Mr. Correa is excused, Mr. Wade.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Here.
Mr. Cretelli.
Here.
Ms. Brunel.
Here.
And Chair Rosenberg.
Here.
And also present with us this evening is Mark Hittrich, Attorney of the Board, along with his associate Gillian McClear, Gerald Frida, Board Engineer, and Christine Bell, our Board Planner.
Just like to make a motion to approve the minutes of November nineteenth. Only those available, please. I can't even make that motion, go on.
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Afuso?
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Cretelli?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Afuso?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Ray, you're muted.
Mr. Wade? You're muted.
Unmute, Ray.
Hold your spacebar.
Ray, you're muted.
I'll give some flashcards. Hey, unmute.
Put your finger up or down, Ray.
One is yes, two is no.
All right, Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Yes.
I got him, thank you, Mr. Wade and Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I lost everything there for a minute.
Okay. Um, we do have two resolutions to memorialize, the first resolution is Resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen, it's approval of bulk variances for Frank and Stacy Caponegro, Block fifty-six, Lot fifteen, it's, the address is five-ten Fourth Avenue, do I have one of those eligible members to make a motion?
I motion, prove it.
Mr. Quinlan, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Afuso, who's my second?
Wade.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Afuso?
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli?
Uh, approved, yes.
Uh, Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And the second resolution is Resolution twenty twenty dash seventeen, approval of bulk variances for Richard and Michelle Lee, Block twenty-one, Lot five, five oh seven, Park Place Avenue, do I have a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Wade, you're my second?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Afuso?
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
First case, Steve and Linda Peretti will not be heard tonight. Want to be carried through to January seventh, and new notice will be provided, so if anybody's here for that meeting tonight, just let you know that it's not going to be heard. And anybody who's noticed will be re-noticed.
Correct, there was an issue with the notice into the newspaper, which is why they're not being heard this evening, so they had to re-notice.
Now, before we start, I want to read our uh rules.
Have a question?
Yes.
Um, was that about Block thirty-seven, Lot two?
No.
Okay, that's going to be heard tonight?
We'll get to master as per the agenda.
Yeah, they're last on the agenda, but we should reach them, yes.
Let me read, let me read our rules, please. This meeting will be recorded for transcription purposes. No member of the public shall yell from the audience, speak out of turn, as it'll disrupt the official record. Once the Board of Adjustment accepts service on the application, the applicant will proceed to call witnesses. The applicant or their attorney will first examine each witness. Next, the members of the Board will ask questions and cross-examine witnesses. Finally, the members of the audience will be entitled to cross-examine the witness, asking questions related only to that testimony. This is not the time members of the audience will give testimony, present evidence, or make comments. Once the applicant has finished presenting all evidence and all witnesses, any interested member of the audience may then make comments, present evidence and testimony. There'll be five-minute timeline for each audience member to speak. It is requested that comments shall not be repetitive. All members of the audience who intend to give testimony must do under oath. The applicant or his attorney may cross-examine you upon your testimony. The Board may also call its own witnesses, present its own evidence, respect to any applicant. It may require more than one hearing to complete an application. The application will be then carried to a future date, will be announced at the conclusion of the meeting. The Board of Adjustment will attempt to adjourn the meeting at a reasonable hour, therefore, in the notes served, will the witness be called to provide testimony after ten PM, thank you. First case, Joseph and Jane Miller. It was heard on December third. Hence continued. Mr. Miller. Or Mrs. Miller.
Um, I'm here, Joe Miller.
All right, Mr. Miller, let me swear you in along with Christine Bell. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight's proceeding?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Miller, you want to tell us what happened?
Uh, yes, um, so I came to the Board at the last meeting with the idea of removing a portion of the kitchen to turn it into a wet bar, uh, which we talked about a lot through that meeting. It was decided that we should take out uh, which was approximately six foot of the kitchen, inclusive of the refrigerator and stove. After discussion through the lawyers with the Heinz's who are purchasing the home, uh, they said just take the whole thing out, they would prefer that. So I brought in a GC electrician and a plumber, and we removed the entire kitchen.
You did send us a picture of that, we have on record?
Uh, yes, yes.
Do you have? Yeah, let's just put us the records clear.
Hold on one second.
Top is what the kitchen was originally?
That's right, that's the um, original photo.
Second was after the wet bar?
Hmm, oh, sorry, this is not the right one.
There was another one that showed.
Yeah. Hold on one second. They just sent me a new one.
He sent it to us the other day, but I think.
The new, yep, the before and after.
Right, the public should see it.
Yep, that's the after.
Okay, this is what it looks like, Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir.
It's completely clean?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board?
Christie, what's that marked?
I don't necessarily know that we marked anything because it was all distributed at the last meeting, so we can mark this as exhibit, we can mark the first one as Exhibit A-one. And mark this as A-two.
That's fine, thank you.
Any five from the public have any questions for Mr. Miller? You could take it down, Christie, I think I already can. Anybody from the public have anything, ask Mr. Miller?
Just checking for physical hands, I don't see any. No virtual hands, no questions, anybody from the Board have any questions?
Questions or comments? Okay, I'd like to make a motion then.
Yes.
Anybody in the general public want to make a comment?
Yeah.
Any comments, Chrissy?
Not seeing any.
No, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution to change and take off the um, permanent use of a second kitchen, this house now has one kitchen, and showed in evidence. We got to relieve the, what's it actually called, Mark?
The deed restrict, we're gonna, this will in effect remove the deed restriction.
Remove the deed restriction.
And Mr. Quinlan, you are my second?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Afuso?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli?
Yes.
And Chair Rosenberg?
Yes. So, thank you.
So, Mr. Miller, let me just tell you of the next process. So, I, I know the title company had prepared a uh, a document um, to remove the deed restriction because that's what they required, so that has been supplied by uh, to Christie, who, you know, revised it with the accurate date of the approval. And our chairman is going to um, sign off on that, and Christie will witness that, and that'll be forwarded to the title company, okay? So, but it, what, what I am also going to do, because typically, typically when something gets approved or denied before this Board, there's a resolution. Um, so, I'm going to, in addition to that, prepare a resolution that'll be adopted at a future date, reflecting what has happened. So the Board has a record and, you know, ultimately someone else will buy this house someday, and that there's a record that would be for the Board that there was a application with a deed, where there, there was an approval of the deed restriction, and then there was an application, and there's a resolution that the deed restriction was removed, okay?
Okay.
Satisfied, Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next case is David Marco Ouchi. Five fourteen Mammoth Avenue. Applicant is seeking a bulk variance for distance to an opposed spa hot tub and detached accessory building. Mr. Ouchi, you want to present your case, but I think you want in first.
Sorry.
Is there anybody testifying beside you?
Um, so, I have a contractor in, in case there's any questions, but it would miss myself, I'm the homeowner.
Is he here?
Uh, yes, he's here as well, on the line, his name is Declan Murphy.
Okay, would he, Mr. Kittredge will swear both of you in?
I don't see him.
I don't see him, what's his name?
Declan Murphy.
Declan Murphy?
Declan Murphy.
Yeah, Declan Murphy.
Oh, I'm seeing him.
I'm not. Where, where is Declan? Declan, can you speak up, because then you'll move to the front here.
That's in here.
He's on page two on mine.
Could you want to just come to the screen? See, he's on the same.
Ah, I, I see you, but uh, he's connecting to audio.
Are you both together?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay, okay.
All right, fine, right. If it is, each raise your right hand, please, along with Mr. Frida and Ms. Bell. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight's proceeding?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is that your case?
Um, are we not swearing in, Jerry?
We did.
I did.
Oh, you did, I thought you said Christine.
Both.
Okay.
I, um, I'm looking to install a spa in my rear yard, um, I currently have a swimming pool and a um, it's a, it's currently a garage structure, and I'm looking to put a spa next to the garage. Um, the only variance I'm applying for is the distance between the garage itself and the spa, um, following the the required setbacks from, from my neighbors, um, and my coverage wouldn't change, it would just be taking a current um, deck that's already built and placing a spa on top of it.
And what is the distance between two?
The distance between, excuse me?
What is the distance, are you?
So I'm, I'm looking to put it up against the garage.
Which is, oh, which is no feet.
Correct.
And what's supposed to be?
Supposed to be, I believe, ten.
Hmm. Is there any way you can put it, any more distance anywhere else?
Yes, um, I was looking to, to, to maximize the setback from my neighbors, um, the, the required setback from neighbors is, is six feet, so we could minimize that setback, which would, which would, you know, reduce our setback to the neighbors. But I was looking to maximize the distance from the, the property line.
I, i-if I could, this is Jerry.
Yeah, I was coming to you, Jared.
Yeah, I just want to help out a little, um, I, I, I think he actually picked out the best location.
Yeah.
Um, he really, his hands are tied as to where he could put it, it's not a very big uh, lot. Uh, putting it up against the garage does two things, one, it's in an area where he's already has lot coverage.
Right.
So it doesn't make that increase. And it also increases and provides the maximum distance from his neighbors. So I, I do concur, I think that's the best location for it, if it's approved.
Is it safe to put it in that location next to the garage?
Um, well, from a zoning standpoint, yes, uh, if there are any electrical issues, they would get picked up during construction.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board?
This one, is the garage a um, so a two-story garage or a one-story garage, just curious?
Yeah, no, it's a one-story garage.
Okay. No windows is, issues on that side?
That's correct, there's no windows in the structure at all.
Can we look at the plot plan? I don't have one here with me.
Let me see if I can pull it up for you.
The dark spot is where the hot tub is going?
That's correct.
Lot of stuff in that backyard. So the garage is really a storage area?
Really, yes. It's not actually used to park cars, that's correct.
Have you calculated your impervious area?
Yeah, I believe it's sixty-seven percent. Yeah, it's in sixty-seven percent.
Is that include the uh, hot tub?
Yes, it does, the, the impervious area would not change, but the sixty-seven percent, the sixty-seven percent does include the hot tub. It's currently on a, a deck, which is impervious obviously as well.
Whoa. I see.
So this, if you can see this right here, this, you know, the, the other line that's close to the dark area, that's already in existence.
Right, okay.
Any other questions from the Board? Any questions from the general public? Christie, none?
No, I don't see any, those that are not participating with video, please remember you have to unmute yourself if you have a question. There's no one.
Any comments from the Board? Any comments from general public?
Not seeing any hands.
I make a motion, we approve the applicant seeking a bulk variance, not changing impervious coverage for the distance between the spa and the detached accessory structure.
One second.
One second, oh, go ahead.
Mayor?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Afuso?
Uh, yes, based on the uh, testimony of our expert, it seems like this was the uh, the best of all alternatives, so my vote of yes.
Okay, um, Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli?
Uh huh, yes, it appears that it's just being a hot tub put on top of a deck that's already in place.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Chair Rosenberg?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Pleasure.
Good luck to you.
Enjoy.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too.
Alan and Marilyn Levine, Block forty-eight, Lot two, to continuation of a hearing that was done on November seventeenth, represented by Mark R. Atkins. Who is here?
I think Mr. Atkins is muted.
Yeah, Mr. Atkins is muted.
Better?
Anybody else with you, Mr. Atkins?
Terrific, uh, yes, I believe Dr. and Mrs. Levine are here, as well as the project manager, Bill Scharfenberg, and uh, a licensed planner, Brian Left, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you want to get them together so we could swim in?
Good evening, Mr. Atkins. Good evening, Mr. Kittredge. So, um, will uh, both Dr. and Mrs. Levine be testifying? I think just Mrs. Levine. All right, and uh, I'm sorry, her first name is? Marilyn. Okay. All right, and Brian Left? Brian Left, a licensed planner. And your contractor is? Uh, Bill Scharfenberg. Okay, so if each one of those uh, individuals could raise their right hand, please, along with Ms. Bell and Ms. Mr. Frida, uh, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth of tonight's proceeding?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Okay.
Want to continue, Mr. Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, so this is a continuation of our hearing from September seventeenth, actually, two months uh, to the day. And um, the original proposal was to demolish the two-family residence and construct a new single-family residence with an attached garage, or retain the existing rear two-story apartment, remove the rear shed, remove vegetation on the south facade of the rear two-story apartment, and re-side to match the three sides per the concerns of the neighbor, Mr. McAllister, that I had shared with the Board. Uh, since then, revised architectural plans have been submitted to the Board, they're revised through October uh, one uh, twenty twenty, along with a revised plot plan revised through November fifth, two thousand twenty. Uh, the revised um, architectural plans uh, eliminated the controversial deck above the garage, uh, much to the satisfaction of uh, Attorney Gerald Shaw, who represented the neighbor on the east. Uh, we reduced the garage to one bay, and we added a small balcony on the southwest house, house corner, having a depth of four feet and a width of eight feet. The revised plot plan eliminates several prior variances, which include building separation, driveway to the side yard setback, and the use of gravel in the parking area. You'll see that your planner's updated review letter shows that there was a question as to meeting the uh, maximum impervious uh, coverage of thirty-five percent, and uh, we had stipulated, and we continue to stipulate, that we will remove the uh, sh- the shed and the shower area at the rear two-story apartment, thus reducing the coverage to below thirty-five percent, and also eliminating that bulk variance as well. Our planner will testify this evening with regard to the criteria for the use variance. We think it's a better planning alternative to have a one-family new single-family residence than to have the existing two-family uh, residence uh, at, at the front building. Um, he'll also testify that there's adequate parking on site, there are four spaces required for the two dwelling units. Uh, four are provided, uh, currently there would be six required because there are three dwelling units, so that's a reduction of six required to four uh, required and provided. And then uh, the Board had, had some concerns about the floor plan of the rear two-story apartment. Uh, Mrs. Levine will testify uh, as to the um, the floor plan and plan dimensions. Uh, we have asked uh, the Board to consider, uh, should the Board deem the application appropriate to be approved, the ability to submit um, actual floor plans uh, from our architect as a condition subsequent. So um, with that, um, I would uh, call um, uh, Mrs. Levine to testify as to the uh, layout of the two-story uh, rear apartment.
Everybody sworn in?
Yes.
Where's Miss Levine?
Can you, can you un, un, unmute? There we go.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are, Mrs. Levine, good evening, how are you?
Hi, I'm good, how are you doing?
I'm well, thank you, um, you're familiar with the two-story rear apartment at the, at the back of your property, correct?
Right, right.
You've, you've been in there, you, you, you have a very good handle on what uh, what's going on there.
Yes, I do.
Great, can you describe the approximate dimensions of the rooms on a floor-by-floor basis at the two, the two-story apartment, please?
Well, as I explained at the last meeting, the basic setup is you um, you enter into the apartment, there's one entrance, there's a stairway up, and then on the ground floor, there's a one-bedroom area with a closet. Um, then there is an area where there is a um, hot water heater, another utility area where the furnace, furnace is housed.
So.
Um, then there's a laundry room and closet storage area, and a, a small finish room, now, as far as the dimensions, do you want the dimensions on everything?
Yes. If the Board would like, yes, please.
Do you want them, yes?
We don't have, we don't have a plan of that, a written plan?
No, I'll do the best I can, I had my tenant measure the rooms, um, and basically, the bedroom measures about twelve feet eleven inches by about ten and a half feet. And then there's a um, storage area that runs along the side, which is about, oh, God. Let's stick here. Well, there's one small room that runs along the back there, that's about uh, uh, seven feet by about seven and a half feet. And then there's a storage area that runs the length of it, which is only about uh, I would say six feet, roughly six feet by about um, trying to read their handwriting here.
Sixteen feet?
Yeah, sixteen feet, yes, that sounds about right. Um, the laundry space measures about ten feet by about uh, four and a half feet, I would say roughly.
And that's tucked in behind the stairs on the first floor?
Yes, tucked in behind the stairs, then as you go, as you go up the stairs, at the top of the stairs to the left is a bathroom, which measures about four feet four inches, and it's about eleven feet three inches long.
And that's basically above the laundry room on the first floor?
Exactly, exactly.
Right.
Okay, good. Okay, good, glad you're on this. Okay, and then there's the kitchen area, which measures about twelve feet by about seven feet eight inches. And then there's the master bedroom upstairs there, and that looks like it's about seventeen feet long by roughly, I would say, um, maybe nine feet wide.
That's what the drawing, yes.
Right, right, that's what I'm looking at the drawing here. Um, and then there's the living room area, which is about, uh, nine feet ten inches by about eleven feet ten inches. And then there's a sunroom that runs along the front of that, and that is seventeen feet three inches by about seven and a half feet. Now, on the lower floor, the downstairs area, there is a storage area that's only accessible from the outside of the building, and that would be directly below what you're looking at for the sunroom, which is on the second floor, and that's roughly seven and a half feet by ten feet.
So to recap, we've got a bedroom on the first floor, and we've got a bedroom, a kitchen, and a living room, and a bath on the, on the second floor.
Right, right, most of the living space is all up on the second floor. The first floor has the one bedroom, and then most of the spaces are their closets slash storage area and utility areas.
Thank you, Mrs. Levine. Uh, no further questions, Mr. Chairman and Mrs. Levine.
Anybody have questions in the board?
Ask, is there a bedroom on the first floor?
No, there's only one bathroom, and it's upstairs.
Any other questions in the board? Any questions in the public? Annie, Kristine?
Uh, no, I have a lot of people not participating with video, so I'm assuming no, and I don't see vertical hands.
Okay.
Next witness.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Levine. Uh, the applicant's now called Brian Leff, a professional planner. Uh, coincidentally, he's also a licensed landscape architect, but his testimony will be offered for professional planning purposes this evening. Mr. Leff, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Great, good evening. Do you possess any licenses from the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I'm currently licensed as a professional planner and as a landscape architect.
And how long have you been so licensed?
Uh, approximately, as a landscape architect, approximately twenty years as a planner, nineteen or eighteen.
Have you given testimony before planning and zoning boards in this state?
Yes, I have. I've provided planning testimony throughout the state in front of multiple municipalities, uh, just about every municipality in Monmouth County.
And in Monmouth County, great. Mr. Chairman?
I, I accept.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Leff, um, you've had the opportunity to familiarize yourself with the, uh, plot plan and with the architectural, uh, plans, both as revised. Uh, as I indicated on the record, you've heard the testimony of Mrs. Levine. Uh, can you provide a little background for the board as to what's proposed, uh, for the, um, D variance as well as, um, the, uh, the proposed bulk variance concerning, uh, the, um, uh, small balcony at the second floor of the southwest corner of the, the, the new residence?
Sure. We're here this evening, the tract is known as Block forty-eight, Lot two. As shown on the Bradley Beach tax maps, it's commonly known as four-one-three Brynley Avenue. The tract has an area of about seventy-five hundred square feet. It's currently developed with two principal structures, a two-family residential structure and a detached apartment at the rear of the tract. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing two-family structure and construct a new single-family residential home with an attached garage. The existing detached apartment building will remain. Off-street parking is provided for both residences. There's two spaces being provided and directly in front of the apartment, one space being provided in front of the new attached garage, and there would be one space available, actually more than one space available within the driveway area itself. The tract is located with the, within the R-one zoning district, where a single-family residential uses are permitted. Detached garage apartments are also permitted as a conditional use. Now, while the existing apartment was likely originally constructed as a detached garage, the garage component was eliminated at some unknown point in the past. So as the structure is no longer used as a garage, it's considered a second principal use on the lot. The continuance of the second principal structure on the tract requires a variance. Additionally, the existing apartment building is located approximately one foot from the rear property line, whereas twenty-five feet is required. As there's no change to the apartment is proposed, the condition will continue. Excuse me. The proposed improvements will also result in the elimination of several variances. Uh, there would be a use variance eliminated. The non-conforming two-family structure will be removed and replaced with a conforming single-family structure. And the front yard setback is currently twenty-four point two feet, which is just slightly shy of the required twenty-five feet, so that variance would also be eliminated. Now, looking at the variances that are being sought tonight, although the proposed single-family structure is permitted and will conform to all bulk zoning criteria, the applicant is seeking some relief from the Bradley Beach zoning ordinance as it relates to the existing apartment building. The first variance is a rear setback, where the applicant is seeking to maintain the existing apartment building at the rear of the site. The building is currently located approximately one foot from the rear property line, whereas the required rear setback distance is twenty-five feet. This is an existing condition that will not be impacted by the proposed improvements. As this is an existing condition with no known detrimental impacts, there are no negative impacts associated with allowing the condition to remain. The second variance is for having multiple structures on the tract. The applicant is proposing to maintain the existing apartment building in its current condition and construct a new single-family structure on the lot. This will result in a continued condition of two principal structures on the lot. Again, this is an existing condition. The apartment is legally existing structure with a current certificate of occupancy. Structure has existed for more than fifty years at its current location, and there's no indication when the garage use was eliminated. There's no garage existing when the applicant purchased the home in two thousand nineteen. He was informed at that time that the garage was eliminated, or that it was used as an apart, strictly as an apartment since around nineteen fifty, but there's no way to confirm that. The ordinance permits a garage apartment as a conditional use in the R-one zoning district. It does not provide a definition of a garage apartment. The existing structure meets all conditions associated with this permitted use had it been considered a garage apartment, except for providing living space on the ground floor in this place of a garage. An attached garage is proposed for the new structure. As this is a legally existing use and structure, there are no negative impacts associated with maintaining it in its current condition. In connection with tonight's hearing, I did take a look at the review letter that was prepared by the board's professionals. And it had a, I'd like to talk about a few things. Uh, first is a deck, the rear deck. Uh, the letter indicates two variances associated with the small balconies proposed at the rear of the residence. The section of the ordinance cited in the letter is four-fifty dash thirteen point E, which provides exceptions for decks that protrude into the side or rear yard setback areas. Specifically, the ordinance permits an open, uncovered, and unroofed deck no greater than three feet from the ground to be constructed to a point within five feet of the property side or rear property line. The review letter notes potential variance is necessary for a deck that is greater than feet, three feet from the ground, as it is a second-floor deck, as well as providing a covered deck, since the second-floor deck covers the first-floor deck. Although there are balconies proposed at the rear of the residence, their entire footprint is within the permitted building envelope. As proposed balconies at the rear of the residence do not encroach into any setback areas, this section of the ordinance does not appear to be applicable to this application. However, the proposed balconies are stacked on top of each other. Both contain a depth of four feet, which is about enough room for two small chairs, maybe a small table. It's enough room to enjoy a morning cup of coffee, but not enough room for entertaining. As both balconies are contained within the building setback areas, there are no negative impacts associated with the construction of either of those elements. The second item would be for building cover, which was briefly covered in Mr. Atkins' introduction. The review letter notes potential variance for building cover, where thirty-five percent is permitted and thirty-four point nine nine percent is proposed. The engineer notes the emission of the small shed on the side of the apartment building. This is actually an outdoor shower with some small storage incorporated. The applicant is in the process of having this feature removed, and as a condition of any approval, the applicant will agree to remove that structure, maintaining the building cover under thirty-five percent. I took a look at the municipal master plan in connection with this application. The two thousand fourteen master plan reexamination report identifies the proliferation of multifamily housing throughout the borough as a continuing concern, as it threatens the single-family character of the community. In fact, specific goal A states, "The single-family character of the borough is a very important asset. Repitiation and infill of housing stock should be encouraged where appropriate, while maintaining the character, scale, and privacy of the established residential neighborhoods in the borough." The proposed improvements will result in the removal of a non-conforming two-family structure and construction of a new single-family structure. This will effectively advance this goal and reinforce the character of the community. I also took a look at the municipal land use law. Now, the municipal land use law is a legal document which provides the framework for all municipal zoning. This document contains several purposes, which are intended to guide the development throughout the state. Purpose B of the municipal land use law is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions, and the preservation of the environment. The elimination of the two-family structure will bring the tract closer to conformance with the zoning ordinance and reinforce the single-character, single-family character of the community. Proposed development will advance this purpose of the municipal land use law. Secondly, purpose I is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. The proposed structure has been designed to be consistent with the character of the neighborhood, and this will promote the desirable visual environment and advance this purpose of the municipal land use law. So in summary, the applicant is proposing to remove the existing two-family residential structure with, on Block forty-eight, Lot two. While some continuing relief is being sought from the zoning ordinance, no new variances are being created. The proposed development will result in the removal of a non-conforming use, as well as a front yard setback variance. Overall, the lot will be closer to conformance with the zoning ordinance than it is under the current conditions. This represents a benefit to the community as a whole. The proposed improvements will advance several purposes of the municipal land use law and are consistent with the goals of the master plan. In my opinion, the relief being sought may be granted without impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance, and will not result in any negative impacts on the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the community. And that sums up my direct testimony. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Leff. No further questions, Mr. Chairman, board members, for Mr. Leff at this time.
Mr. Quinlan? Can you, uh, show us some pictures of the existing?
I do not have any photographs of the existing house, no.
I do.
Can we see him?
I don't, if you tell me how to, to send them to you, I can send them to you.
Can you share your screen? Do you have them on your computer? Can you share your screen, or?
I have them on my phone.
Still a back house that looks, it's a house, not a garage.
Correct.
This is, can I show you from my phone somehow? Can I hold it up here? No.
Oh, you can't really.
Just a flash.
Can you see that?
That's the garage apartment?
That's the garage, yes.
Yeah.
That's the two-story apartment that was once a garage.
Yeah, to me, it looks like a full house.
Um, this is storage on the lower level in the front there. And then, of course, that's the porch that we talked about on the upper level there.
Twenty feet by?
Oh, I measured it. It's the, the building is roughly, the width is about eighteen feet. My husband and I measured it the other day, and about thirty-two feet long.
Uh, it's pretty big.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have to, uh, log out, and I'll be back in approximately thirty minutes, okay?
Mr. Lear, you're in charge.
Gillian McClair.
Gillian McClair is going to be in charge.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, some questions in the board?
I have a couple of questions. Um, I, I actually walk my dog past this house every day. Um, you have very large, mature trees on that property, and I know the town is in the process of creating, um, basically, an arbor program. I wondered what was going to happen with those trees when you build this house.
Well, I think you're referring to the large tree that's, um, next to the driveway, and that is actually on the next-door neighbor's property, not ours.
Okay, and then, uh, my other question, um, concerns the garage apartment. What condition would you say that building's in if it's been there for fifty years? Is that going to need attention in the foreseeable future, or are you going to?
No, it doesn't really need any major attention. The, the kitchen had actually been renovated before, you know, we purchased it. I don't know how many years ago, but, you know, it's been upgraded with the dishwasher and, you know, refrigerator, cabinetry, that sort of thing.
I'm not actually talking about the inside, I'm talking about the exterior.
The exterior, well, uh, um, other, it, it had been cited in, you know, I don't know how many years ago, but recently, you know, within the past, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years, would you say? I don't know. Um, the back that faces, uh, the McAllisters, that would be, I guess, the south-facing was, was not cited, had not been cited at the time. Um, when the previous owner had the apartment cited, for whatever his reasons. So the McAllisters had requested that we have that cited, which we've agreed to do. And the only other thing that I think, um, the update that that particular structure might be able to use would be a new roof at some time in the
I was going to ask.
In the future, right, right.
Yeah, I mean, the house currently is a, was a single-family home that I think, if I'm, I'm not mistaken, was just converted into a two-family.
A few years ago, yes, I don't, but there again, I don't know. It wasn't the owner we bought the home from, it was the previous owner, so two owners ago, had it converted, I believe, into the two-family house, yes.
Okay, and then I have one other question. Uh, when you're doing the, um, elevation for the height of the overall structure, I'm just curious as to why they didn't use the midway point of the dormer as opposed to, it appears to me they used the midway point of the second floor as opposed to the dormers, which appear to be higher. I mean, I could be maybe reading it incorrectly, but it, it looks to me like they, they used, uh, like, I would not have used that point, I would have used the, the further point as the midway point for the overall elevation of the property.
Mary?
I don't know, is, is Bill there?
When, uh, when, when we did our review, we didn't take any exceptions to the calculations, so, um, you know, we found them to be, you know, pretty standard in the way you do calculate the height. So we didn't have any, any problem with what was submitted.
The fr, the front elevation on the architectural drawings show an overall building height to the peak of the ridge as thirty-three, five, and one sixteenth inches.
Right, so it's under thirty-five.
So it's under thirty-five?
Right, and that is clearly under the thirty-five feet. I, I think the confusing part is they did show additional dimensions, and that may be why, um, some of the board members might be confused. But they did, oh, they did present the application correctly, and they do not need a variance for building height.
Okay, thank you. Debbie, I know you walk that, may I ask you a question that refers to this?
Sure.
Does the whole back house need to be recited, from your view?
Um.
Because it's fifteen or eighteen years old, you're building a beautiful new house in the front, why do you want to have something old in the back?
Right, and I'm just, I'm just concerned that in a few years, we're going to be looking at that back house and it needing more than fifty percent to be revitalized.
Right.
It, I, I, I wish there were pictures to show the board of what that back house looks like, because I've been in the McAllisters backyard, and it's right on their fence, like, right on their fence. It's a huge two-story building, and saying the roof needs repair is putting it mildly in terms of what probably can live under the rafters. So I'm just concerned about the back house, not the front.
Mr. Atkins, does your, your clients want to address that?
Well, again, I think we've agreed to, uh, re-side that southerly face, uh, uh, which faces the McAllisters. I had that conversation with Mr. McAllister. I represented that in September, I represented that at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, some folks say that a roof works until it leaks. Um, so if it's an aesthetic concern, I'd have to ask my clients whether they're willing to, uh, you know, replace that roof, and certainly they can check the age of it, we can check the age of the siding as well. Uh, and I think it's a fair point that if there's a brand-new house going up, of course, Uh, and I think it's a fair point that if there's a brand-new house going up, of course, that highlights the deficiencies of any other house or any other structure, uh, that's within the immediate area.
I think you should contact, speak to your, uh, clients. Because the, the gist of the board is going to run that way.
So, so I, I, I feel, I feel comfortable in stipulating that, yes, if we're re-siding that southerly exposure, the southerly side of the two-story rear apartment, we'll re-side the other sides as well, and we'll re-roof it too.
Okay.
So we'll stipulate that.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Um, I think just to reiterate some of the concerns the board has already brought up. Uh, but I took a little bit of exception, uh, to the planner's characteristic that, um, the rear structure basically conformed to all the requirements of a garage apartment with the exception of first-floor living space, because as I think this board is aware, um, that first-floor living space is certainly an issue, uh, in terms of garage apartments in Bradley Beach, and that's not something you've really looked favorably on in a garage apartment in the recent past, um, so I certainly would not consider this structure that has living space on both floors to be similar to a garage apartment.
We, we consider it to be a validly existing, uh, prior non-conforming use. We do not consider it to be a garage apartment.
A couple of questions. On the garage apartment or whatever we're calling it, how much, what, what do we look at as far as square footage of living space?
Oh, I don't know that. That would need to be calculated, I wouldn't have a clue how to do that.
You have to know these things come to, to hearing.
If, if I could help, if I could help just a little.
Mr. Frida.
Okay, I, I, of course, I can't give you very accurately, but, um, they testified the dimensions to be eighteen by thirty-two. So, you know, that right there puts you, what, about six hundred and something square feet?
Right.
Six hundred up and six hundred down, though.
Yeah, well, I mean, you're gonna have, you're gonna have, uh, living space up and down in this unit. Um, that's true. So, um, it does fit the size criteria of the building.
The only living, the only living space on the downstairs is the bedroom, and currently, it's not even being used as a bedroom. The rest is just utility, storage closet space.
And another room, you, you stayed as a, another.
There's a bedroom, there's a bedroom downstairs, right. It's not currently being used as a bedroom, but when we purchased the property, the other tenant had it as a spare bedroom.
You stayed, one room was six by sixteen, approximately, another room was twelve by ten, another room was ten by four, and then, that's the laundry room, and the toilet room was seven by seven, roughly. There's a lot of downstairs living, you got a six by sixteen.
But it's not, it's not, it's not finished living space is what I'm trying to say, it's, you know.
You said one is a bedroom there.
One is the bedroom, yes, that is finished living space. The other space, for the most part, are cinder-blocked areas with wire shelving for closets. Um, there's a one-room cordoned off or, or walled off, whatever, for a laundry room. Then there's another area, utility area, you know, with a furnace and, you know, another area where the hot water heater is tucked in.
A- a- and again, if I could help the board, um, so you're basically looking at one bedroom on the first floor, that's roughly twelve by ten, uh, which is the only thing that is uncharacteristically different than what we would normally see. All right, and remember, this is an existing, um, condition.
It's helpful.
Could that be turned back into a garage?
No, the last meeting, well, actually, this was brought up, I'm sorry, this was brought up at the last meeting, and they said because of the age of the structure, it could not be turned back into a garage.
Mark, Mike, Mike.
Um, all right, well, I, I'll follow up on that one, but then I want to get to the back deck situation, too. At the last meeting, you just, you just said they said it couldn't be a, a garage, who's the "they"?
I don't know, someone at your meeting. Oh, your engineer, actually.
Oh, no, that's incorrect, I never stated that.
Oh, well, then you'll have to look at your minutes.
It could definitely be done, but it would be a challenge, it's not something that would be easily, easily done.
Okay.
And further to that point, because it's narrow, um, the most you could really get in there is one car. So, to do something like that, at that expense, for one car and the space isn't really needed for parking on site, I think that might be pushing a little too far in that direction.
The depth of that room is only ten, ten feet and change. You couldn't put a car in there without changing structural walls inside on the first floor.
Right, but, well, yeah, you could do it, I mean, uh, listen, if you,
Anything could be done.
If you wanted to, you could do it, but I don't, I don't think it's an easy fix, I don't think it's something that can be done easily at all. It would probably be pretty costly to do.
It would be very costly.
For one parking spot, yes.
Mike, you have another question?
Yeah, my other question is on this, uh, on the back deck, on the primary structure, the, the, uh, the, uh, second-story back deck. Correct me if I'm wrong, um, this, uh, this is certainly, uh, problematic, and a, a, uh, definitely a deviation from our, our ordinance, correct?
Yeah, we're not supposed to.
The ordinance only, does not prohibit second-floor decks when they're within the setback line.
So, if I may, um, there is some debate there from both sides. We've taken up the opposite side with the zoning officer and people in town, and we've looked at it differently. Uh, I think we've talked about this in past applications. Uh, we were, we were going to talk about it more under their first proposal, when they had the much, much bigger, um, deck area over the two-car garage that was proposed. Um, to me, the bigger issue with what they're proposing is because the size criteria is more realistic. Um, it's just a matter of the roof over the bottom deck. And I think that's something the board should focus on, because a variance should be called for that.
But there's no more roof on the garage, correct?
No, that's gone, they've taken that away, um, and they come back with this proposal where it's about a four-by-nine area. I think that was testified to, it's also shown on the drawings that way. Much more manageable, much more of a balcony situation. Not a deck.
Anybody else on the board?
Yes, um.
Dave?
I- if I recall correctly, in, in recent past, we had issues with a, a, a second-floor deck. Is there any neighbors that have a problem with this? Because my recollection was that we had one of these in front of us where there was a lot of backlash from neighbors because of a second floor or deck. Um, is that the case here?
Well, remember, e- every application stands on its own, so, uh, we don't know that until we get to a public session. We, we do know, I think there was some talk that the neighbor uh, on one side was very much against the deck over the two-car garage, and the applicant has addressed that by coming back with this amended plan. But we haven't heard anything from the public yet on what, what we see before us.
Okay. Anybody else on the board at this point?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Wade.
Is that back house a full-time resident, residence?
Yes, they've been there for over a year. They're a young couple, they have businesses in, in, uh,
Belmore.
Belmore.
All right, anybody else in the board? Any questions from the general public? To, to the, to the planner.
Uh, Mr. Cohen has.
Terry has a question.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Um, sorry, Mr. Chair, um, I, I thought that the problem also was, uh, with the, um, not the roof over the, over the first-floor deck, but the fact that they were adding a second-floor deck here. Um, that's been a problem that we've discussed with other applicants.
And that's what Mr. Fuso brought up.
Right.
And, and that, that is true, it has come up before.
That's an issue with the board.
Our, a- and our ordinance isn't very clear in that matter.
Okay.
Mister, somebody else had a hand over here? Mr. iPad nine-four-one-eight?
Yeah, Mr. Cohen has his hand raised.
Thomas Cohen, six-twelve Third Avenue.
Uh, Mr. Cohen, I'm sorry, before you begin, I'm just going to swear you in, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, and can you please restate your address?
Sure, uh, six-twelve Third Avenue, Bradley Beach.
Thank you very much.
Sure, I had a question for Mr. Lef, um, Mr. Lef, um, this is a use variance, is it not?
Yes, it is.
So, uh, what time and what point in the future does this, uh, garage apartment become conforming?
Right now, it's a legally existing structure, it's a legally existing use with a certificate of occupancy. I would say it's conforming right now.
Uh, it's conforming to the ordinance?
Well, it has, it, it's legally existing. I'm not, I'm not following your question as to what point does it become.
My question is, you're, you're requesting, requesting a use variance. So, at what, what point does the Borough of Bradley Beach get a conforming building there if it's not this meeting?
Well, I think we have to be careful, there's not a requirement that Bradley Beach gets a conforming building or a conforming lot. What Bradley Beach has now is three units there, Mr. Cohen, and it's going to get two units. The rear unit validly exists, it, it enjoys statutory protections under the municipal land use law. It may be changed, it may never be changed, but that's not the focus of the application. Nonetheless, to accommodate the board's concerns for the aesthetic.
Last night's meeting was the best, oh my god.
Nonetheless, to, to address the board's concerns and the neighbors' concerns, we've agreed to re-side not only one, but now all three sides, as well as to re-roof it.
But you're still requesting a use variance, are you not, Mr. Akins?
The, the use variance takes the two-family and makes it a one-family. That's a better land-use alternative and a reduction in the intensity on the site than that which exists now.
But you still need a use variance for the garage apartment, correct?
No, you need a use variance for the new structure. Once the two-family comes down, the primary residence is the rear apartment. And so to put a new single-family residence, that's the use variance that's needed. The, the rear apartment needs nothing, it needs no variance, it enjoys statutory protection as a pre-existing non-conforming use. There's a valid C of O for the tenants who live there. The inside's not being touched.
Okay, um, I, in terms of, uh, could, a conforming lot, Mr. Lef, in the Borough of Bradley Beach, the ordinances do allow two structures on a property, do they not?
In certain situations, yes.
If you have a conforming five-thousand-square-foot lot or larger, are you entitled to two units on a property?
Not necessarily.
And why wouldn't that be?
Because this is an R-one zone where single-family homes are permitted. You are permitted a second unit if it is a garage apartment, this is not a garage apartment.
And, and that garage apartment would be only a one-bedroom if it was conforming, is that correct?
There's no restriction on the number of bedrooms, only that the bottom floor has to be occupied by a garage.
Did you read the ordinance, sir?
I did.
Okay, I just think you maybe want to take a look at that again.
It allows for one unit, not one bedroom.
Counsel, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask guys to the relevancy, we're not talking about.
Well, I'll, I'll get to that with my next question, Mr. Akins. Um, Mr. Lef, in terms of population densities, what is more dense? A one-bedroom apartment or a two-bedroom apartment? What would create a greater density in a neighborhood?
Objection as to objection.
Are you talking about actual people?
Objection as to relevancy.
Question. Next, I'm not gonna lie to that question.
Well, we're, we're looking at population densities, Mr. Chairman.
We're reducing the density from three units to two.
Testimony.
Okay.
Any other, any other question?
I'm done now, thank you.
Any other questions in the public?
There's a Dr. Tom that has had his hand up.
I don't see him.
Now, hi, Dr. Tom McGuire, six-ten Brynley Avenue.
Okay, yes.
Doctor, can you raise your right hand and I'll swear you in? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your full name.
Sure, Dr. Tom McGuire, six-ten Brynley.
Yes, sir, question for the planner.
Yes, my question is, we were talking about the lower, um, part of the, I, I don't know what we're calling it, is it a garage apartment or is it a, or whatever? That, that.
It's a structure right now.
A structure, is it occupied downstairs if someone's living in the, like, the first floor?
There is a tenant for the apartment, but my understanding is that there's, the first floor is not occupied right now, it's just a young couple who are living on the second floor with a o- open bedroom in their apartment, basically.
Okay, I'm not sure if you can answer this or not, but if the, um, I know they're building a brand-new garage, but I, when we were talking about the costs and saying it's going to be costly, would it be the same cost to renovate that and turn that into a garage?
That I don't know.
Okay. All right, but, um, you said that, that bedroom is down there, correct?
There is one bedroom on the first floor, yes.
Okay, and is that going to be eliminated, or is that going to stay there once this passes?
This proposal doesn't impact the apartment building at all, it's staying in its exact current condition with the exception of the siding and the roofing that we agreed to this evening.
Okay, and then, once i- i- if it does get passed, would it be considered two primary structures on that lot now?
That's exactly why we're here, because we're seeking approval for two primary structures.
Okay, and how deep is that lot?
It's a hundred and fifty feet.
Hundred and fifty, and it's wide, is it fifty?
Yes, it's fifty feet wide.
Okay, thank you so much.
I, I just heard something in this testimony, just here, the lower, that bedroom is not occupied, it's not being used? Mr. Akins?
There, there are two people that live in the apartment. So they use the upstairs bedroom, I don't know what she uses the downstairs bedroom for. Um, storage or crafts, she wanted a craft room, so I, I don't know, you know, I, I don't infringe on my tenants' privacy, they're good people, they take care of, you know, their unit, and, uh, they pay their rent, so.
Mr. Schiffer. Carl?
Can you hear me?
Come a little closer to your speaker.
Okay, I'm having computer problems, um, this, actually.
It's gotta be sworn in, give your name and.
Uh, Carl Shaptr, four-fifteen Brynley Avenue.
Can you please raise your right hand, Mr. Schaffer? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, you may proceed.
Um, there's actually, most of the time, there's three people in there, and there's three cars that come and go. So, um, I haven't really talked to them in ages. Uh, there's a red car, a black car, and a white van, a white van. So I don't really know who's in there, so there's gonna be, there's three cars there now. Um, but, um, the, the main, I was just addressing someone's comment there, the, the thing that I, I'm confused about is in the plans, we're talking about a rear deck, and I didn't see that in any of the uh, drawings online.
It is very small and would be very easy to miss. Uh, originally, as I understand, there was a large deck that was on top of the proposed attached garage. Now it has been reduced, it's more of a balcony than a deck, it's only four feet deep by about eight or nine feet wide.
First floor, second floor?
It's both, one on top of the other, there are.
Facing south or west?
Facing south.
Okay.
Right at the corner where the proposed garage meets the main house.
All right, much appreciated, I just couldn't see that.
It's very tiny.
Yeah, my main concern about the cars is that if they have a two-car garage, and then there's three other cars there, gonna be kind of busy.
Well, can, there should not be three other cars, there, there are only two people that are on that certificate of occupancy and on the lease, so, um, you know, we park there as well, my daughter sometimes parks there, so I don't know, um, uh, I know they do have a business, so I don't know which cars you're referring to, um. I think the big black car is his car, and she has an old car, it's probably the red one. I don't know who the, I don't know who the, they are, I don't.
The white van, the black car is his, the red car is her, hers, and the white van, I don't know whose it is.
Okay, I don't either, but I, I will check with her and see.
I'm just concerned you won't be able to turn around if they put all those cars there.
No, 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 they won't be putting all those cars there.
Any other questions from the public? Christine?
Um, Dr. Tom has his hand raised again, but is this a question for the witness again, or?
Yeah, it's Prajit this time.
Okay.
Gotta be, name and, uh, name sworn in.
Prajit McGuire, six ten Brinley Avenue.
Can you please raise your right hands? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just to reiterate, the, is, the variance is for being able to build on the front with a prin- another principal structure, not a garage apartment, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
And plans don't have to be provided in the-
Plans have been, plans have been provided full-
For the back house, for what's there now?
No, because that's not being changed.
I understand it's not being changed, but it's being asked that two principal structures can be put on this lot, which is, that's not allowed, so I'm wondering how something like this can get approved if there's not a plan to see what is getting approved as a principal structure?
Well, again, that structure in the rear is a valid, prior-existing, non-conforming use. The interior is not proposed to be touched. We did offer, and I, I indicated at the beginning of the meeting, that we would provide architectural plans as a condition of any approval that the board saw fit. We had Mrs. Levine testify room by room as to the dimensions on a, a foot and inch basis, uh, as well as what each room is used for. And so, what is proposed here and what requires the variance is the new structure, not the rear two-story apartment, but the new structure. That requires the variance once the two-family structure is removed. And obviously, architectural plans and elevations have been provided in great detail for that structure.
Right.
Cause that's the one that requires the variance.
I appreciate that, just based on the history of Bradley Beach and the principal structure issue as a back house, it's huge in Bradley, and it's very commonly asked that plans are drawn up to accept something like this from a lot of people. And it's hard for, it's hard for other residents to partake in this when we can't even grasp what's there for the board to then say it's okay, so that's why I'm asking, can we consider providing what's back there to then say two principal structures to be allowed on this property, which is something that across the board has been quite a problem for a lot of people who have tried to do the same thing?
But I think the key concern here is not garage, not, not two-story apartment versus no two-story apartment, that's going to stay. The question for members of the public and neighbors and the board is, do you want the existing two-family residents to stay? Or do you want it to be replaced with the new residence, single-family that's proposed? That's the question before the board this evening.
So, I'm confused, so ask, so, meaning that the, the applicants then are okay walking away just to keep the house as is?
Well, that would seem to be a terrible travesty for everybody, but that would be the option if the board denied it or the residents objected to it.
Okay, I'm just, I, I'm just confused because of knowing what's had to be provided in the past with two principal structures, so, thank you.
Any other members of the public?
Oops.
Mr. Akins, you're next.
Uh, no further witnesses, Mr. Chairman, applicants resting, subject to comments from the public.
Any comments?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, it's Jerry, may I make a comment? Um, i- in light of the points brought up by the last resident, um, would the applicant consider, uh, if approved, the condition of supplying the borough with an as-built survey of the inside of the building?
Yes, we, we, I had offered in my introductory remarks this evening that we would be happy to provide detailed architectural plans for the interior of the building and elevations as well, that's fine, we have no issue doing that on, on a subject-to basis.
I, I think that might be helpful for the board.
We're, we're ha- we're happy to give everyone a baseline so that the record is clear going forward to the square inch, what's there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, I'm gonna ask you a question.
Sure.
After we approve it, why not before we approve it?
I concur.
Um, again, would, if that's your preference, I just, I just feel like, um, it was valid question that was asked by the resident and an easy way to supply the answer would be to get an as-built of that existing apartment.
We really-
It could be done under a condition, uh, or it could be done, uh, before, in which case they'd have to come back to a, a future meeting to get their final approvals.
Anybody from the board have a comment?
Mr. Sharon? Go ahead, Dave.
Dennis.
Yes, I got, we, we still haven't addressed the rear deck on second floor, really, and, and also to Mr. Cohen's point, to move this property towards the path of conformance, if the sec- if that first floor bedroom was agreed to be removed, it's one step closer. It's probably never gonna be a garage, we know that, and that's happened a ton, but it was had, if that first floor bedroom, since it's not even being used right now, it's just a space, but the bedroom component was removed.
Are you gonna?
No, no, listen to this woman. I guess, I, it's a question that, if that's, if that's possible, if that's something to move the application for property? By looking what's happened, going from a two-family up front and one family in the back, to two one families, so it's already a diminished use. And that porch in the back, you know, there's this give and take, where are we at? So, I just wanna hear from the applicant's attorney and the applicant as to if that's even possible.
Well, again, I, I, I think what we're looking at is statutory protections that the two-story rear apartment enjoys. The board and the neighbors expressed significant concerns with regard to the aesthetic and architectural impact from an exterior perspective as to that building. The applicants heard that and are willing to address that. But they enjoy certain rights under the land use law that have evolved over time and have been ratified by the Borough of Bradley Beach. Now they're seeking to make a better condition on the front and reduce the intensity of that structure and the age of that structure replaced by a brand-new structure, which seems to my way of thinking to be more than fair, I've been doing this for a long time, uh, probably better than thirty-five years at this point. And I think that the request to further restrict the rear, uh, two-story apartment when there's no proposal to change the interior is not a reasonable one. And I think if the board and, and all step back and look at what is being done here, it's a very significant benefit aesthetically, and it's a very significant reduction in the intensity of use on a per-family basis. And it's consistent with your master plan, and it consists, it's consistent with your zoning ordinance. And I think those are the things that are reasonable, so i- if it, if it matters to the board to see what's inside from an architectural perspective, even though as a matter of law I submit to you, it doesn't change the result with regard to the statutory protections that the two-story rear apartment enjoys, whether they're architectural drawings or not, because it's not being touched.
I don't disagree.
We're, we, we would be, we would be happy to, we'd be happy to provide them. But a- at this point, I'm gonna ask the board's attorney to provide some guidance to the board, because you've heard my opinion as the attorney for the applicant, and I'd like to hear the board's attorney's opinion on this issue.
Before I, I state anything, I, um, Mr. Refuso, you had your hand raised?
Sure, uh, thank you, uh, madam counsel, um, Mr. Akins, um, you're doing a use variance here, how many votes do you need?
We need five.
You need five. Um, I've counted noses in the past, it, it seems like it's getting tough to get to your five here. So, I would, I would counsel you to consider that. Um, I think Mr. Mayor and, and Chair Rosenberg raised some, uh, interesting areas of compromise. I, I don't think it's unreasonable if you're gonna come before the, before this board and ask us for a supermajority to provide us what is in, what, what the, the look of that building is before we vote. Because you could send us anything after we voted and it doesn't really mean anything, correct? If it's subject to, so I, I just think, I just think, I would, i- in my opinion, if you need five votes, I would, I would caucus with your, with your clients and understand that some of us have an issue with this garage situation that we can't get a look at. And secondly, Mr. Mayor and, and my concern, and there may be other board members that have the same concern about this back deck, whether we're calling it a deck, a balcony, or whatever, it's a protruding object off the second floor where we've had some issues. So, I, I, that's, that's just my, my two cents and my, my, uh, where, where I, where I would go.
Mr. Refuso, I agree a hundred percent, cause you know that's where we've been going, and especially the second, the covered balcony on the bottom floor at this top floor is another, another issue, you've got main issues here that, that you want things for, Mr. Cotelli?
Yeah, um, the way I'm looking at this, as I see the positive side of this, is that we're going from three units to two units. If, if I understand this whole thing correctly, the back garage is already a grandfather-approved use. Um, I think one of the things that, uh, come up is the second floor deck, yet, you know, this is a beach town, I have my neighbors to my west, I have my neighbors to my east who have second-floor decks, and there are multiple other houses to the east of me that have second-floor decks. But even though that's the case, we spent a number of meetings on another agenda regarding a second-floor deck and went back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. So, I, I don't know where we should stand on this. I mean, second-floor decks are all over this town, yet we spent two or three meetings on a second-floor deck previously, and I believe we denied the second-floor deck. I don't see this as being anything significant, cause it's not that wide, it's not that big, but where do we cut the line of saying this one's good, that one's bad? And, and again, we're, we're a beach town and, uh, majority of the houses in this town do have garage apartments, do have back decks, do have outdoor showers, um, where, where do we cut the line here? Um, and I'm, I'm just up in the air on.
So, maybe I can help a little bit, um, and, and it is a confusing issue. Uh, and it is really an issue that our ordinance doesn't clearly give the definitions that we need to make it clear. It's a case-by-case basis, so you have to look at this application, I know there's been others in the past that have either been approved or not approved, but look at each case independently from every other one, look at this one. Um, the proposed, uh, I would call it a balcony. Um, it's tucked in behind the house, it only faces the rear, it's very small. Um, the only issue with it is that it covers a lower deck, which means a variance is needed, because you're not allowed to cover the rear decks. So, that's really it in a nutshell for that, now, it's up to the board members, if you feel, you know, against that type of situation, you need to vote how you feel. Uh, and it's, it's unfortunate that our ordinance doesn't give as clear, as clear a path as we would all like, um, but that has to be worked on and provided so that we don't have these issues going forward.
It, it, if it's my, if it's my understanding on this application, we've had no neighbors that have complained about this second-story deck as was the case in a previous application where we had numerous neighbors come out, um, complaining about it, this one is, is uncontested?
Well, again, as far as we know to this point, no one's contested it.
Okay.
I mean, the, the hearing's not over, so I, I don't know where that's gonna go, but I do know there was strong opposition to the original plan that had the huge deck over top of the garage. Okay, we're no longer looking at that, so.
Correct.
I- it's, it's hard, but just focus on this application as it is standalone, uh, and use that as reference moving forward.
Can I say something?
Who is this?
This is Marilyn Levine, okay, we decided to try to make our neighbor happy and not go for the deck above the garage. But we wanted to have a small little area on an upper level outside our bedroom, so maybe we could sit and have coffee in the morning, just the two of us, we're not looking for anything large, just a small little deck to enjoy the, the outdoor area, the sun, the salt air, you know, what good is the beach if you can't enjoy the outdoors? You know, this is crazy, we have, we just want to, you know, build a house, improve the neighborhood, and I don't understand this whole big expense now that you're pushing us into for the back apartment. We have nice tenants there, they're don't make, they take care of the property, we take care of the property, we're certainly not gonna let it decay. And, you know, we've made every effort to try to make everybody happy with this, but there again, you know, we wanna move on with our lives, we've sold our house, we're ready to move on down in Bradley, we had a rented apartment because this is taking so long to move forward, and my husband and I wanna enjoy it while we're still young and healthy enough to enjoy it. I think that's fair.
Do we need two decks in the back to get rid of the, they want the upper one without it, then we're not pulling on the bottom, correct?
Well, I don't know that I need one on the bottom, I thought it would be nice to have coffee upstairs in the morning, read the paper, you know? I didn't realize it was gonna be such an issue.
So, if we don't have one on the bottom, could that, what about that, Jerry? Jerry? They take out the bottom deck, what happens?
If they take the bottom deck out, then that variance of covering the lower level goes away.
I mean, they're willing, she's willing to do that.
There, I believe there's still an entrance into the house there.
Yeah, there is an entrance into the house.
Yeah, hold on a minute, so let me look at this.
How many steps up?
It's less than three feet, so it's okay, it's, it's allowed.
So, they're gonna, they're gonna door plug from there, correct?
Yeah, but, but, but they need a variance for covering the entrance, right? Right now, that's something else, an oddity that Bradley Beach has that has to be addressed, so they would still need a variance for a covered rear entrance.
Okay, but they're not putting the whole deck there, just over, just over the door, the four, the four-by-four, right?
If, if that's what the applicant would agree to.
Uh, he- here's what I suggest, um, you know, at, at the last, uh, meeting, we were admonished not to workshop the, um, the, the plot plan and the architectural drawings, and I feel that we're venturing into those waters again. Uh, also, I think that, uh, Mr. Refuso, uh, is, uh, insisting on the architectural drawings. Again, we have nothing to hide, we can certainly provide those, uh, in a spirit of, uh, yeah, making a record and understanding exactly what's there that does enjoy the statutory prior-existing, non-conforming protections under the land use law. So, I would request, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, uh, Madam Secretary, when the next soonest board meeting is, but I would ask that we be carried, uh, to that meeting so that we have the opportunity to not further workshop it this evening.
Christine? How big is the seventh?
Uh, right now, I have the one that was carried this evening to the seventh, um, and we have two new applications scheduled for the seventh, um.
Can we squeeze it in?
I, I, I don't think that we'd have much, I don't think we'd have too much to talk about, if we provide the architecturals, they're gonna show what they show. We already stipulated that we'll add new siding and a new roofing.
And also, you're here to comment on the decking, so you-
And then we have to, we have to resolve the up and down decking, you know, either one goes away or the other goes away, but I'd rather not do that, uh, you know, live on the Zoom call. Is that gonna give you enough time?
Seventh of January, give you enough time?
That's two weeks, right?
Three weeks.
Three weeks. Yeah, that'll give us enough time. That's three weeks. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, can I make a suggestion to that the board be provided with photographs of the second structure? The so-called garage apartment.
Is that okay with you, Ms. Atkins?
No issue.
Okay, no issue.
We call it the two-story apartment.
Whatever you, whatever you call it. We call it a structure. Want to carry that, make a motion, we carry that with those specific situations until January 2nd, 2021?
Second.
No further notice, correct?
No further notice.
Thank you.
But we must have the plans and everything, at least by the second.
Yes, we'll get them to you.
Okay.
All right, so it's January 7th, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Do we need a vote or just a?
To take a vote, please.
Take a vote. I made, we made the motion seconded.
I'll second.
I made the motion.
Okay, Mr. Chair Rosenberg made the motion. Mr. Quinlan is my second.
Yep.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Cattelli?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Fuso?
Yes.
Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Chair Rosenberg?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Atkins.
Thank you. Happy holidays. We'll see you, we'll see you in 2021.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Next case is Irvington Manor. Seeking an appeal, the zoning officer's determination for 217 McCabe Avenue.
Yes, Board item, if you can hear me, Jim Hunley?
We can hear you.
All right. Thank you. I'm an attorney in Ocean Grove. I represent the applicant Irvington Manor LLC. This is an appeal of the zoning officer's denial of a zoning permit. The zoning permit was applied for as part of an application for a construction permit to perform repair work to the roof and interior and other exterior repairs and renovations. The zoning officer did not issue a zoning permit and he based that, and this is Exhibit 7 that was submitted prior. He based the denial or refusal to issue the zoning permit upon his finding that the use had been abandoned. He cites only the ordinance 201915, which I believe is a typo. 201915 applies to summer rentals. I believe he was referencing 201916 in which the ordinance eliminated the RT transient residential zone. That ordinance was effective June of 2019. Now, we filed an appeal to the Board of Adjustment of that denial of the zoning permit. And I think as my introductory remarks, it would be helpful just to get a little background because there is some prior applications that were made for this property in the planning board. The property.
If I, Mr. Hunley, if I had just interject, you made reference to the denial, the zoning permit denial.
Yes.
That's, can you show that, Kristi?
Well, there was two denials. Which one are we referring to?
I think it's the most recent one. Right?
It's the one that is dated January 15th, 2020. I submitted a copy of that. I think I had that proposed as Exhibit 6.
Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Is this the one you're referring to, Mr. Hunley?
That's the correct one, yes. January 15th, 2020.
Okay, and? And what are we referencing?
We are referencing under additional comments, the prior use, the last line, the prior use of the property has been abandoned. The property consists of one vacant building. Now, the zoning permit did not set forth any factual legal basis for the zoning officer to reach that conclusion. It should be, should bear in mind that this was not a request for a determination of whether this was a nonconforming use or a pre-existing nonconforming use. This was a zoning permit application made to get a construction permit to repair the building. It's the zoning officer apparently took it upon himself to make this determination, but it's not set forth. What was the basis of that determination? So that was one of the problems. The appeal was filed. And we're here tonight just for the purpose of establishing that the prior hotel use of the property was never abandoned. And that is the focus of this hearing. In fact, that is the only issue before this board because it's an appeal of this one document. Was the prior nonconforming use as a hotel abandoned as the zoning officer determined? We have no indication what that basis of that determination was because it's not set forth. And here we are.
Continue.
Mr. Cattelli has a question.
Yes, we get to that. Mr. Hunley's not done yet.
Oh, yes. I did think it was important for the board to be aware that there was some additional procedural history before this appeal. The property was damaged in a fire in March of 2015. Thereafter, the applicant applied to the planning board to demolish the hotel structure and to replace with four townhouses. The Board of Adjustment, oh, shoot me, the planning board, I'm sorry. The planning board denied that application. And that application was then, that was denied on September 22nd, 2016. That denial was then appealed to the Superior Court in Freehold. Initially, the Court in Freehold remanded the matter to, back to the planning board because it found that the planning board had not made any findings of fact or any findings of law to support its denial of the application. And after the remand, and it was almost a year and a half later, on January 25th, 2018, the planning board adopted a new resolution denying the application for the townhouse proposal. That was returned to the court. And the court had the case in freehold until October of 19, a year and a half. And the board in October of 19 firmly planning board's denial of the application. So at that point, when the denial came out, the applicant then made an application for building permits to go back and repair the existing structure. Building, the construction sent the applicant to the, for a zoning permit. And the zoning officer said, you've abandoned that use. We're appealing that determination.
What are you really appealing? That it's, the use wasn't banned, abandoned?
That's correct.
Or the judge affirmed the decision of the planning board?
No, no, this, the Board of Adjustment would not have, that would be the appellate division that have jurisdiction over that matter. This is strictly the denial of the zoning permit, which you have jurisdiction to hear an appeal. And the issue in the denial was the zoning officer's determination that the use, the hotel use had been abandoned.
But Mr. Hunley, who is, who will you have testifying this evening?
This evening, I will have Lisa Paterno, who is the original owner of the property and the current applicant is Irving, I keep saying Livingston, I'm moving this further west in Essex County, but Irvington Manor LLC. And she's the managing partner. She'll be testifying. I also have a.
What is her name?
Lisa Paterno. And that's P-A-T-R-U-N-O.
All right, so that's your witness for tonight?
That's for tonight. Unfortunately, I just got an engineer's report, which I gave to your clerk today. And we will carry the engineer's report to another meeting to give your professionals opportunity to review the report and to possibly visit the site, whatever they require.
Okay, so why don't we swear in Ms. Bruno as well as Mr. Frida and Ms. Bell? So if she could come on screen so we could see her, very good. If you raise your right hand, please, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight's proceeding?
I do.
I do.
Ms. Paterno, where do you reside?
413 Evergreen Avenue in Bradley Beach.
And how long have you been a resident in Bradley Beach?
2001.
Ms. Paterno, drawing your attention to 2004, did you purchase property known as 217 McCabe Avenue, Bradley Beach?
Yes.
And at the time you purchased the property, you purchased that in your individual name?
Yes.
At the time you purchased the property, what was the property being used as?
It was being used as a hotel.
Was it a seasonal or a year-round hotel at the time you purchased it?
It was an annual hotel.
Now, after you purchased the hotel in 2004, did you continue the use as a year-round hotel?
Did.
Would you, first of all, describe the property at the time you purchased it in 2004?
It was used as a hotel year-round and it was used as a hotel as long as the building existed.
And how many rooms did the hotel have?
14.
And were there any other structures on the property besides the hotel building?
There were three other bungalows located in the rear of the hotel.
And what were the bungalows used as?
Those were used for summer rentals.
Now, the building itself, the hotel building, how many stories was it?
Three.
And how many rental hotel rooms were in it?
14.
Now, you indicated that you had been in town since 2001. Prior to your purchasing the property, were you familiar with the property at all from living in town?
Yes.
And from your observations, was the property from the time you moved in, was it being used as a hotel or another use?
It was being used as a hotel.
After you acquired the property, did you determine when the property was built from the tax records?
I believe it was 1906.
And examining the interior of the property, was there anything about the interior of the property, the 14 rooms themselves that would indicate to you that the property had been used as a hotel for a period of time before you purchased it?
Yes, the rooms each had an individual sinks and some of them had a lot of bathrooms.
And what about the sink of the bathrooms that indicated that the individual rooms were used as hotel rooms? What about the fixtures that was unique?
They were, they were designed basically back in the 1900s.
Now, during the time, from the time you purchased the building in 2004 until the fire in 2015, during that period of time, was the structure being used as a rental, as a hotel rather?
It was completely used as a hotel from the time that I bought it until the fire.
Now, I'm sorry, I want to jump back two years before the second fire. In 2013, was there a fire on the property?
Yes.
And what occurred as a result of the fire?
The existing structures, which were the summer bungalows in the back, were burnt and I had demolished them.
And did the main hotel structure, the three-story structure, was that damaged in the 2013 fire?
No.
Between your purchase in 2004 and the second fire in 2015, did you use the main structure as a hotel during that entire period of time?
Yes, I used the structure until I had the fire.
And during that period of time, was the property registered with the state of New Jersey as a hotel? During that period of time, did you also obtain mercantile licenses from the borough of Bradley Beach?
Yes.
And were there any other permits, licenses that you would obtain on an annual basis from Bradley Beach during that period?
I maintained my mercantile license and my license with the state of New Jersey.
Did you get any other permits or pay any other fees to Bradley Beach during that 11-year period, four to 14?
I paid for my mercantile license and my tourism fee, my insurance, my state license and my town license, which was the mercantile.
Now, when the fire occurred, what month do you recall when the fire occurred?
I believe it was in March of 2015.
And can you briefly describe the damage to the hotel building as a result of that fire?
There was a fire attic, an attic in the fire, a fire in the attic. And it destroyed the top part of the roof in the back. And it charred some of the walls on the third level.
Was it ever determined the cause of that fire?
It was determined that it was an electrical fire.
Were any other portions of the Were any other portions of the, um, main structure damaged as a result of the fire?
No.
Was there other damage, uh, to the, uh, basement, first or second floor? Resulting from either the fire or, uh, the firefighting. The firefighters putting out the fire, extinguishing the blaze.
There was only fire damage on the, on the top, uh, on the roof, which was the attic. And some fire damage on the third level, but all the other levels were intact. The only other damage there was from water damage from the fire trucks.
Now, following the fire. In March of twenty fifteen, uh, did there come a time? When you transferred title. From. The, from your individual name to, um, an LLC, the, um, Irvington Manor LLC.
Yes, I transferred it from my name into the Irvington Manor LLC.
And, um, I'm gonna show you what's marked exhibit two. Is that a copy of the deed? From you individually to, to your LLC?
Yes.
And what was the purpose of, uh, transferring title?
Um, the purpose of transferring the title was to protect myself as everyone else does for LLCs. Um, and also I believe I needed an individual LLC for my hotel.
Now, also I should show you one other document, excuse me just for a moment. I wanna show you, um. What I've previously been submitted to the board as exhibit one. Do you recognize that document?
Yes.
And what is that document exhibit one?
Uh, it is a deed made by Eugene Del Priore in two thousand and four to Lisa Paterno. For two seventeen McCabe Avenue.
Now, following. The twenty fifteen fire. Did there come a time when your LLC? Uh, made application to the Bradley Beach Planning Board, uh, for. A, um. Certain site plan approvals and variances for the. Um, construction of four townhouse condominiums.
Yes.
And do you recall when that application was made? Uh, how long after the March twenty fifteen fire was that application, uh, made?
I believe I hired an attorney three or four months after that, um. I was in the process, I had applied for an electrical permit to put an outside electrical. Unit there so people could use that for a generator in order to do construction if I was denied. Um, my application for the townhouses.
Uh, do you recall what year that was?
I believe that was twenty fifteen.
And did there come a time when you had a hearing? Uh, before the Bradley Beach Planning Board, um, did you attend as the? Owner of the, uh, applicant LLC?
I did.
And what was the result of the hearing?
I was denied my application.
And I am going to show you. If I haven't eaten it, may I excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Paterno, I'm gonna show you what's been marked as exhibit seven. And is this? In fact, your application. Uh, development application before the, uh, Bradley Beach Planning Board?
Yes.
And I'm gonna ask you on the last page.
Mr. Hunley, you had referred to exhibit seven as the denial from the zoning officer before, so which exhibit is this?
Uh, I'm sorry, no, exhibit six was the denial of the zoning permit. Seven is the application, uh, before the Borough Bradley Beach Planning Board Development Application.
Okay, thank you.
And what is the date of that application?
April first, twenty sixteen.
And is there come a time when that application was denied?
Yes.
And I'm going to show you. Exhibit eight and ask you if you recognize, uh, that document?
Yes.
And is this the, uh, planning board's denial of your application? For the construction of the four townhouses on that property?
Yes.
And what is the date of the planning board's denial?
Nine twenty two sixteen.
Now, after the planning board denied the, um, applicant's application for townhouse use at that property. Was that appealed to the? Superior Court?
Yes.
And. Drawing your attention to this period court matter, was there a time that the court sent it back to Bradley Beach?
Yes.
And do you know why the court sent it back to Bradley Beach? Planning Board, that is.
I believe that the app, their application wasn't complete. I, 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 uh, there was, there were problems with what they submitted to the court.
Well, Mr. Hunley, uh, she's not an attorney. And you are, and I think you, you know, advised the board when it happened, so we'll accept your representation.
And I think if I may, just for your ratification, on exhibit. Nine is Judge Thornton's. March third, twenty nineteen, uh, order. Uh, with the attached, um, written decision. Denying that application, I would draw the. Board's attention to two parts of that decision. This is the written decision, page two. In which the court found that at the time of the application. The property was in the RT residential transition zone. I would also draw your attention. To, um. Page eleven of that decision. In which there is an, uh, a brief discussion of the procedural history, that was the remand. And then the planning board's, uh, readoption of an ordinance, I've, of a, um, resolution rather.
So, eh, you know, having, having been familiar with this process. Would it be fair to say that Judge Thornton sent it back and said you had to put more information in that resolution?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and then that was done, it was sent back to the court. And the court in an expeditious manner.
In an expeditious manner from. Yeah, you were.
Being a little facetious.
I, I enjoy facetious. Not at my expense, Mr. Kitter.
Yeah, that's. But I think you and I have both seen that, how that process works.
Right, so essentially from the fire in. Twenty, March of twenty fifteen until you received the. Uh, October third, twenty nineteen, uh, court order denying your, dismissing your appeal. Uh, during that period of time. Was the hotel, were any repairs done to the hotel during that time?
No.
During that same period of time, did you have, um. Did you continue to have the property registered at, uh, as a hotel with the state?
Yes.
Is it still registered as a hotel with the state?
Yes.
When was the last time the hotel was scheduled for inspection?
It was two years ago and they told me that the next inspection date is due on twenty twenty three.
During the five year, or excuse me, four year period. Between, between the, almost five years, between the. March twenty fifteen fire and Judge Thornton's, uh, October third, twenty nineteen order. Did you, uh, at any time during that period, did you apply to the Borough Bradley Beach for mercantile licenses?
Yes.
And, um, what years did you apply for the mercantile license?
Every year since I've owned it.
And does that include the years after the fire until Judge, uh, Thornton's decision?
Yes.
I'm gonna show you what was submitted as. Uh, exhibit four, and if you look at that and tell me what, uh, that particular document is.
It's a check to the Borough of Bradley Beach for the mercantile license on December first of twenty seventeen.
And. Were you subsequently issued a mercantile license? For the twenty eighteen calendar year?
Yes.
I'm gonna show you what's been marked as exhibit three and ask you to identify that document.
Yes, that's my mercantile license.
And. Did you subsequently apply for? An additional mercantile license after exhibit three expired on December thirty first, twenty eighteen?
Yes.
And did you get a? Were you issued a mercantile license for calendar year twenty nineteen?
No.
Did you? And I'm gonna show you, um, exhibit five and see if you identify that. Document.
Yes, it's a check written to the Borough of Bradley Beach for my mercantile license stating December thirty first, twenty eighteen.
And what is the amount of that?
Sixty five dollars.
And on the bottom of that document, this is exhibit five, does it tell you on that document? Uh, when that check was cashed?
It's, uh, twen-. Twenty, let's say, twenty nineteen, one, two, so that's December first, twenty nineteen.
January. One, two, Jan.
Uh, yeah, so, okay, so it's one, two of January.
January twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
So the. Check exhibit five was your payment for the twenty nineteen mercantile license?
Yes.
Was a twenty nineteen mercantile ever li- uh, issued to you by the borough?
No.
Did you subsequently apply to the borough for a twenty twenty mercantile license?
Yes.
And when did you, uh, make application for that?
That was on, uh, October twenty eighth, twenty nineteen.
And, uh, what was the amount of the payment on October twenty ninth, twenty nineteen?
It was one hundred and forty dollars for the mercantile and tourism fee.
And, uh, was that, uh, check subsequently negotiated and cashed by the borough?
Yes.
Were you ever issued a twenty twenty mercantile license after you paid the fee and the tourism, uh, fee?
No.
Were you ever told by anyone at the borough or informed or notified why you were not issued a twenty nineteen mercantile license?
No.
Were you ever informed by the borough why you were not issued a twenty twenty mercantile license?
No.
What are your current plans for the use of this property? Or I should say your LLC's use of the property?
My current plans are maintaining my hotel license and running it as a hotel.
Now. After. The zoning permit was denied by the zoning officer in January of twenty twenty. Uh, has there been any additional? Permits, building permits of any type issued for the property?
I put in a permit to reframe the roof. Uh, which I was denied. Uh, and I think that's it because I can't do anything unless I reframe the roof.
And, um, let me ask you this, besides the property in question, your LLC owns. Do you own any other, uh, properties, uh, rental or hotels or commercial, any other properties of any type?
Yes.
And, uh, if you tell the board just briefly what other types of properties you own besides your residence and, um. The, uh. Two seventeen, uh, McCabe.
I own five units, uh, in Bradley Beach as well.
And, um, in addition, uh, five units, is that a?
They're bungalows and two family.
Is that five separate units or is that?
Two are connected, actually, four of them are connected and one is separate.
And so that's two parcels or one parcel or two?
It's one lot.
One lot. And are you also familiar with, um, construction? Uh, have you been involved in construction, uh, in your past?
Yes.
And, uh, right now, do you have a concern about, uh, the building? If you're unable to obtain a permit to repair the roof?
Yes.
And what is your concern?
My concern is the structure needs to be enclosed. So the elements don't get into the regular, the rest of the structure to cause more damage than. The water damage was caused and the fire damage. Uh, whatever's inside needs to be taken out. Uh, but it, and the structure needs to be enclosed for various reasons, for birds, anything that might get into the structure through the roof. Uh, and to enclose it, to secure it and to make it back into the hotel that it was. When I bought it.
I have no further questions, the witness.
Anybody from the board? I, I do have one question. When you wanted to make it a townhouse, doesn't that, isn't that an intentment, your intent? To abandon the hotel use to make it a townhouse?
I never attempt. I, I never had the attempt to abandon the use.
But why were you gonna build a townhouse?
If the, if I was granted the use, a change of use, then I would have abandoned the use, but I never abandoned it.
And how much did the building department, insurance department and consider percent of damage to that house? And what is the damage today?
Well.
It's been vacant for six years.
If I may, um, just interject. We also have an, um, architect. Uh, unfortunately, we retained him last spring and summer. To do a report and for some reason I didn't get the report until today. Um, it was dated. August. And, uh, I delivered it to your clerk today. And as I said in my opening, because he was, uh, you know, we just got you the report as a matter of just fairness. Uh, to allow your, uh, professionals to view it and to possibly examine the property if required. So I think that might be, uh, the extent would be better served, uh, at the next meeting. Uh, when we will present the testimony of the, uh, architect engineer.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Um, I have a question, um, if, if you put the hotel back with fourteen rooms. Does that mean you would also need fourteen parking places, assuming that all the rooms are filled?
I, I would let my attorney answer that question.
I think if it's a position would be, and of course. We might be free to argue this, but I think at that point. If it was a prior non-conforming use that did not have parking. At any time, well, let me just ask you, was there ever any parking on the site?
No.
I believe that would be grandfathered in. It's both the use and the structure, which would include the parking would be a prior non-conforming use.
How big is the piece of property?
Excuse me?
How large is the lot?
How big is the lot?
I don't believe that has anything to do with this application.
Well, well, you, you don't, you don't get to make that determination, so can you answer the question?
I can get a survey if you'd like.
Dave is next, Mike is after that.
I just went back to the planning board file, I was not the attorney on that application. I just pulled out a. Oh, I'm sorry, this is roof repair, let me just see if there's anything on it. Uh, indicating the. There is, and now I'm referring to a. Roof repair. Plan that was submitted to the construction department. I believe they were returned when the application was denied. There is an indication that the property is fifty feet. Wide and a hundred and fifty feet deep.
Does the subject property is seventy five hundred square feet?
That's correct, yes.
David?
That would be correct, but the.
I'm, I'm just in one of your testimonies.
Just trying to understand what's going on here, if I understand it correctly, the property burnt over five years ago?
That's correct, yes.
And it has been exposed to the weather for over five years then?
Yes.
Okay. So five years of weathering. Is going to have some kind of impact on the overall structure above and beyond just, just a roof.
And that would be addressed. At our next meeting by. Our engineer. Who's report was submitted to the board today.
Michael.
Mike. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, couple of things. It's disappointing that this engineer's report comes to light, you know, right now. I've walked past the structure for years and it's a blight. It's an absolute blight, so, you know, that's, that's, that's just where I start, but let's, I mean, let, let's start with the fires. And I say two, indicated you had two fires on the site, one was an electrical fire, what was the nature of this, of the other fire?
It was electrical.
So you had two electrical fires on the same site within a short period of time?
Yes.
And, and the hotel itself. You said it was, it was year round, right?
Yes.
And what was the average stay in the hotel for a person that was, was staying there?
One day to three months.
One day to three months. So you would anticipate that this would be the same business model that you would carry forward into the future?
I would have to follow whatever Bradley Beach ordinance is for hotels.
There is no ordinance.
Then I would follow. Hotel license like any other hotel.
If it is. What it would be, I'm trying to get at the traffic people situation. So if, if in the past you had one day to, to three months type of a situation, you, you would anticipate that that would probably be the same. Five years later.
Not necessarily the, now there's VRBO and Airbnb's which do weekend rentals, et cetera, so. The climate has changed quite a bit in the last few.
Okay, um, and I guess, I guess to, to kind of get a finer point on the, on the chairman's question about. You know, what was your, what was your intention with this property? You had, you had two fires that happened in, in short proximity and then you went to the planning board to have. To, to have condominiums placed upon it. What, what was your, when, after the fire, what was your game plan, what were you hoping to do?
Well, I had put in an application to put in five townhouses, I was told. In a concept meeting that that wouldn't be allowed to eliminate. The townhouse in order to make it a smaller project, which I did. I hired attorneys, an attorney, an engineer, an architect. And a planner in order to change the use of the property. But I had also told the board and my attorney had told the board from the beginning that if I was denied to change the property. It would maintain, be maintained as a hotel, I never planned on abandoning the use if I did not get. The ability to change the structure.
And the structures in the back that you, that you said were removed, they were removed also because of the fire?
Yes.
The first fire or the second fire?
The first fire.
So there was an electrical fire in the front house and caused you remove a, a property in the back house?
No.
What was the cause of the twenty thirteen fire, where was the electrical problem that caused the fire?
There's a rear electrical line that goes in the back of all the houses and all the properties in Bradley Beach. It's a separate electrical line from the front of the houses, so they're on a different grid, they're on, they're on a different line. There was a, there was an electrical surge in the back of that property that caused the fire to those bungalows. It had nothing to do with the front house.
Okay, so you just, you just, both properties had, both, both buildings had independent fires?
Yes.
Okay. It, it just, I, I, no further questions.
Any other, anybody from the board?
If I may just interject something here. There is a Bradley Beach ordinance, it's found in chapter two, five, eight, it's two, five, eight, one. And. It does set conditions and requirements for hotels. I'm sorry, I don't know when this was adopted. But the current zoning or the current ordinance. Subsection J says a facility shall not allow any guests to remain more than thirty days. Or more than thirty days of any sixty successive days, so. I think, I know there was a comment before that, there were no ordinance involving hotels, I believe there is one.
So, so you're saying she violated the ordinance already because her testimony was people stayed there for three months?
No, this ordinance was adopted when. The property was being used as a hotel. That was the, that was the use that was allowed, I believe this ordinance came in. Sometime. In twenty fourteen or so.
Okay, and the fire was in twenty fifteen?
That's correct.
Okay, so it was used as a hotel in twenty fourteen, was a fire in twenty fifteen. Testimony at hand said it was from one to, to, one day to three months and, and you're recalling an ordinance that, that. Says your, your client, I'm not finished yet, violated the ordinance.
The information I have in front of me. Is chapter two, five, eight zoning. See chapter four, fifty. Now, the document I have in front of me, I believe I got offline from your website. Says that four, fifty. Five, four, fifty hyphen five was amended August twenty six, twenty fourteen. The portion that I read to you, two, fifty, eight, one, I don't know. When that was. Adopted, when it was changed, the reference here, the fact that it references. On the top of it to see, I'm sorry, on the bottom, see chapter four, fifty. Would indicate that at least this copy. Had been. It, it's not clear, it could have been before August twenty sixth of fourteen. Or it could have been after, that's why it's referencing, I have to tell you, I don't know. When two, fifty eight was adopted, two, fifty eight point one. I can find out, I check with the clerk tomorrow and provide that to the board.
To chairman?
Dennis.
I have a question for, for Mr. Ketrick, about the issuance of the mercantile licenses. So is the history of the mercantile license being issued for this property? Does that automatically convey that it is a hotel that just doesn't mean, or it's just a, a permit to do business? Is it as a hotel and are records required of who stayed and time periods and anything like that, is, is that supposed to happen?
So without looking at the actual document. I mean, that was. That's the ability to, to do business, that license is the ability to do business. Within the municipality for the. Purpose of which is being represented by the, by the applicant of the license. I, I, it's not clear to me that there's any inspections involved in that.
So just the issuance of the mercantile license on that that conveys the use.
To me, that's not determinative of, you know.
But wouldn't there be records also too of how the hotels, this hotel was used and. As, as has been testified, one night to thirty days or sixty days, whatever, shouldn't that be some records that we know? When, when was the last time it was, which, because the real question is, the crux of the matter is, when, when was it determined? Why was determined it was abandoned, when was it abandoned, when? By the, by the zoning officer?
Right, so the mercantile license wouldn't address any of those issues?
With the use of it, with actual use of people sleeping in the bedrooms and using it and paying. As running a business, would those records be available to support the? Use or continued use, I don't know, I'm just.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know that the borough would have those type of records.
What would the applicant, that's the business, would the business owner have that? Are they required by the state to maintain those records because hotels are, is a regulated industry?
Right.
Don't know.
If I may interject, the purpose of our introducing. The testimony concerning the buildings continued being registered as a hotel. And also applying each year for the Borough Mercantile License. Was evidence of the applicant's intent to continue the use and not abandon it. The, well, I'll let your attorney inform you of what the. Courts have said about the two part determination of what constitutes abandoned intent. And an overt act, but. I will tell you that at the time we filed this appeal. I did send Oprah request to. I believe construction code mercantile. And I got back from the planning board and I got back. Records of the appeal, but I did not receive any other documents from any other borough department.
I have another question going back to mercantile license, you showed us an application from twenty eighteen, what happened to fifteen, sixteen, seventeen?
I have all of those mercantile licenses.
We can submit them for the next hearing.
Okay, but you didn't get one for nineteen or twenty?
I paid for them, but I did not receive.
You didn't receive them, that they weren't issued, okay.
All right, and as to the abandonment issue and the legal requirements, you know, at, at the, we'll review all that. And discuss that with the board prior to any decision by the board, so I suspect that'll be at the next hearing date.
Very good.
Any other body from the board?
I, I have a question, if I could, Mr. Chairman, what, what, what was the last? The date of the last time a hotel room was rented?
Right bef, there were occupants in there at twenty fifteen.
So what, what time period in twenty fifteen are we talking about?
Whatever the date was, the fire, there were people in the building.
Do you know, do you recall the date of the fire?
I don't.
Anybody else from?
So it, it was last rented about five years ago, so fair to say?
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That stayed for thirty days, were they people that were coming from out of town and wanted to actually stay in Bradley Beach for a month? What, um, were they, you know, New Jersey P, section eight? Um, you know, who was staying in, in the hotel for that length of time? Time to stay in one room.
I don't discriminate against anyone.
I, I wasn't referring to being discriminatory, I was just wondering if. State pays a portion of that, um, was that the case?
Whoever came to my hotel who needed a, a room, I would rent to.
Okay.
We'll get further into that, Debbie. So you're gonna have to give more proof. Mike, we're only on the board, Mr. McCormick.
Thanks, thank you again, Mr. Chairman, I know I, I was up before. How many, how many, if any, times were? Law enforcement officers called to the building. To the hotel in the past from, from the time you owned it, how, what was the average time? Per year?
I can't tell you that, I don't know.
You don't know? Do you, were, have any, do you know of any citizens' complaints that were issued against the building?
I don't have any records of that.
Has there been any?
I don't know.
Have you received any kind of citation from the city, from the municipality?
I've received recent citations for boarding up the property, which I did, which I complied with.
Okay, what about when it was in use as a hotel?
I don't believe so, I don't know, I'd have to look through my records. I don't believe so. I don't know. I'd have to look through my records.
Anybody else? Anybody else on the board? Do we open this up to the public, Mr. Kitchen or not?
Yeah, that'd be fine. So these are, so before we start, I know we see some hands to there. The question is for the witness, based on the testimony that's been presented. When you're called upon, nobody shouts out, when you're called upon, state your name and your address and ask the question.
I'll call, I'll call one name at a time. Mr. McCormick had his name first. Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Wait a minute.
Now, it's a question. Just state your name and address, please.
Bud McCormick, two nineteen McCabe Avenue, proud resident of Bradley Beach since nineteen eighty-two.
Can I ask you a question?
Okay, I, I can tell you everything about that house before.
Ask me the question.
We don't want you to tell us everything about the house. At the, at the end of all the testimony, you, you, you will be sworn in and you give a comment and you can say all those things. So right now, it's a question for this witness. So I'm gonna repeat this again for everybody who's listening.
Okay. Will there be parking for all the fourteen bedrooms if you put it back into a hotel? Because we had, we don't have any parking now. Just asking how that's gonna work.
If the board wanted to have parking, they would have, they would have, they would have applied my application for the townhomes, which I applied for underground parking for, for many people. But the board denied me that application.
Okay. So perhaps you can answer the question that's been asked.
The property will remain exactly.
Excuse me, excuse me. You were before the planning board, just to make that clear before. This is the Board of Adjustment. So go ahead.
Okay. Is that my question again or her answer?
Her answer again. Let's go.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Petrino, answer this question. Will there have park? Yes or no?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Does she plan on renting to section eight again?
No.
Okay. I think that's all I have for, of till like, till later.
Mr. Carnini?
Yeah, just, just to give a perspective.
Name and address.
Oh, sorry. David Cariani, two sixteen Lorraine. So I have a property directly behind this particular property. And just wanted to just give a perspective, a neighbor's perspective and ask. And while, while I'm doing that, I'll be asking the question. The question is, is during the, when the fire occurred in those bungalows, what was the impact to your neighbor's construction and property and, and, you know, facilities on the property?
I have no idea.
Okay. I, I could tell you that.
I don't think this is part of the application.
Okay, so, so. Time out, time out, time out. So I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna repeat this again. One, these are questions. So, and I, I understand you want to give your perspective. That's fine for later. Once again, I think I'm being pretty clear that you ask questions of the, of the, of the witness that just testified. This is not commentary time. Mr. Hunley, I would also ask you to advise your question, advise your client not to interject legal rulings.
I will. Thank you, Mr. McCadrick.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thomas J. Coann, six twelve Third Avenue. Ms. Petrino, what was the date of the zoning permit denial that brought us here today?
My attorney has that.
Exhibit, exhibit six.
One fifteen twenty.
Yeah. Have you taken any other zoning permits in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, or nineteen to do the roof repair?
No.
Now, when you previously operated the hotel, did you have a twenty-four hour onsite manager?
Yes.
You did. And did you keep a register book?
He did.
He did. Okay. And did you keep the car information for each guest?
Did you hear the question?
Why, I don't understand why I would keep a car registry for guests.
Okay.
How this is pertinent to my zoning application.
All right. So let, let me once again, answer the question. Either, either did or you didn't.
No.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question that's going back to Mr. Gonzo. The register book, the man, where is it today?
My manager had it.
So what would he do after he managed? Would, would, you, you're the owner. It's your business. You collected the money.
Yes, I had a fire in the top part of my building, which burned all of my paperwork.
Okay. You sure you're under oath? Remember that?
Yes, I do remember that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I mean, from the public. Who else got their hands up, Kristy? Nobody?
If there's anyone who has any questions of the witness, if you're not participating with video, please unmute yourself and speak up so we know that you have a question. Questions only at this time. I believe it's star six if you want to unmute.
Anybody?
Nobody. Mr. McCormick, do you have another question or?
Yes. I wanted to ask Lisa, who was the manager? Because I never saw one.
John Kerr.
And he lived at, at, at two seventeen?
He lived partially at two seventeen and two twelve.
Right. When you switch people from one room to the other so they could stay three months there, three months there, three months there, three months there.
Is that a question?
Yes, because he was not in two seventeen. He was across the street.
Excuse me, that's not a question. I object.
I just wanted to know who she had for a hotel person. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? What is your, what is your choice, Mr. Hunley?
Well, as I indicated during my opening, I have a engineer and we'd like to carry the matter to the next available meeting date for the purposes of presenting the testimony of the engineer and the report.
Would you also, Mr. Hunley, at the same time, would you say between now and then, you could have her find the register book?
Yes, if it's available, we will.
Keep that for eleven years. So we're not there yet.
Is that a request from the board to submit it?
Yes, please.
All right, fine. If we can locate it, we'll submit it.
We'll carry it out to February, I guess, right, Kristy? Or February is full?
Um, well, we'll, we'll have to carry it to our January meeting. We will be adopting our dates at that time. But right now, it appears our meeting would be February eighteenth.
Okay. So let's, assuming that, assuming that's the date, we carry it to the February meeting. Mr. Hunley will give you the exact date, January seventh, after we adopt our calendar for the year. We have to wait till January, first, January to reorganize.
Very good. I thank the board very much and.
Motion.
So, so I think Kristy, correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we are technically carrying it to the January seventh meeting.
Correct.
And with the understanding that we will adopt our dates.
And further carry the matter to February eighteen.
With the intention of carrying it to the February eighteenth upon adoption of that meeting date.
Mr. Hunley, you have to be there or no?
He does not have to be there.
Okay.
And there'll be, we would now require Mr. Hunley to re-notice either.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Is that agreeable, Mr. Hunley?
Yes, thank you.
I make a motion. We carry this to January seventh meeting without notification. I'll second that. Mr. Quinlan.
Quinlan, correct?
Correct.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Cattelli?
Raise your finger, Mr. You're mute.
Mr. Cattelli?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Afuso?
Yes, but I, I just want to suggest the applicant, you know, you've listened to previous applications and, and this has been a blight for so long that you come here prepared to answer questions that you anticipate us asking on, on the February meeting.
Very good.
Uh, Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Chair Rosenberg?
Yes.
So just for the public's information, it's a procedural thing. We're carrying it to the January seventh meeting with the intention of it, once we adopt our calendar and we have a February eighteenth meeting scheduled, that this will be carried to that meeting. So that, that's, that, that's, that's the plan. We, but we can't act on that until we reorganize on January seventh, okay? And there will not be any further notices.
Make a motion.
To be an announcement at the January seventh meeting.
Right. It'll be on, it'll be on our website.
Right. Thank you.
I make a motion. We adjourn and everybody have a happy, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Do well, everybody.
You will. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, safe and healthy.
Thank you. You will.